Hello, everyone, and good evening and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School Board Meeting. We are opening our meeting and we are calling our meeting to order. Is there approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes 5-0. There any public comment? Since there is no public comment on items on the closed session, we will recess the closed session and return at 6:00 PM. We will see you shortly. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We are reconvening to open session. The board did not take action in closed session. Trustee Raymond, will you please read our district mission statement?
I would be happy to. Alright, here we go. Mission Statement: We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you, Trustee Raymond. I will now share our public comment instructions. They are long, so bear with me. The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board Agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request to speak form, which are in the back, or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us/publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. Thank you for that. Now we get to go to the fun part, which is having all of you here with us tonight. Ravina Mari.
Yes, and I'd like to welcome our wonderful Principal, Dr. Shi, to come up to start the presentation for Creekside. We're excited to have Creekside here tonight.
So, good evening. I'm Susan Shi, Principal at Creekside Middle School. I'm here with my three staff member and our 12 student leaders. We want to thank our School Board and Superintendent for inviting us here today. We are truly honored and excited to showcase Creekside.
Good evening. I'm Pam Wolf, the Assistant Principal at Creekside. The middle school years are a crucial period in which students experience dramatic changes physiologically, cognitively, socially, and emotionally. We have a unique opportunity to help them develop the essential skills to cope with these changes, to transition into young adulthood, and to prepare for high school and beyond. At Creekside, we believe that supporting our students both academically and socially emotionally is the key to achieving our mission of cultivating academic excellence, equity, and responsibility for all. We are excited to highlight two programs that promote student academic and social emotional growth: Avid and our Wellness Center.
Good evening. My name is Fanny Machado. I'm the Avid Site Coordinator and also the Avid Excel teacher at Creekside. Our goal as a site team is to ensure that students are given the tool that they need to maximize their ability to succeed in high school, college, and beyond. Our Avid Excel program targets long-term English learners and supports them in their language acquisition process while increasing their chances of reclassifying to fully English proficient. Additionally, we focus on creating a school-wide environment that supports college and career readiness with events, thank you, such as Avid Family Night, Avid Spirit Day on Wednesdays, and our annual College and Career Night. Our students benefit greatly... Yep, there we go. Our students benefit greatly from our Avid program. It helps them improve their study and organizational skills while supporting their academic goals. At this time, I'd like to invite a small group of students to share their experiences with Avid. We'll start with Fernanda.
Hello, my name is Fernanda Martinez. I'm in eighth grade. Avid Excel has done a lot for me in life. It has made school easier for me. We have amazing teachers that help us with homework. We go on field trips to different places like colleges or places that teach us about important jobs or careers.
Good evening. My name is Jonas Yan and I'm an eighth grader at Creekside Middle School. Avid has left an astounding impact on me and the purpose of the program is to help students succeed in college and life. Avid has taught and has helped me establish essential skill, academic skills, like collaboration, critical thinking, and productivity. Avid has made me think about the future. Before joining Avid, I wasn't so sure about high school, college, and the adult world. However, Avid has helped me determine my future in those areas as well as what I need to do in order to succeed in life.
My name is Oscar Foo. I am an eighth grader. This is my second year in Avid Excel. In Avid Excel, we get to experience amazing things such as leadership, scholarship, learning about our futures jobs, trying to get into college, and being successful in your job or career. Avid is amazing because you get to experience things. The more you know about Avid Excel, then you can be successful when you're out of Avid... I meant, when you're out of middle school, high school, and college.
Hi, my name is Matthew Rodriguez and I'm in eighth grade. Avid is such a stupendous program for students at Creekside Middle School. Participating in Avid has also improved all my academic skills that were not as advanced in the past. For example, if you need help with writing, then it will become a continuous goal to enhance your writing skills, which will come with repetition and support that Avid will give. I feel more confident doing things that I was uncomfortable with because of all the cooperation I've dealt with in Avid. My academic grades have been spot-on since I've joined the program and are maintained from the focus I obtain every day I'm present in Avid.
Hi, my name is Jane Thompson and I'm in seventh grade. Avid teaches you the skills you need to excel in college, like collaborating, or like not taking, collaborating, and public speaking. These skills can push you to do your best, not only in college, but also in your life. In Avid, we listen to people's presentations about college, do assignments that can help with skills like collaborating, public speaking, and go on college tour field trips. Dating Avid has helped me feel confident in school, personal life, and the idea of what I will and can do to help me have a successful college and career experience. Avid has provided useful skills for me and many other students.
Hi, my name is Jorge Contreras Carrasco. I'm in eighth grade and this is my second year in Avid Excel. I think Avid is an essential program because it made me think about college and my future career. Another reason why Avid helped me is because it helped me get on track with my grades and think more about schoolwork and studying and staying on top of my schedule so I can help my parents and family in the future.
Greetings from Avid. I'm currently in seventh grade at Avid and my name is Winnie Kwong. I found Avid to be a great program where ideas spawn and people learn helpful skills and develop good habits. My teacher, Ms. Machado, encourages us to develop healthy habits like writing our schedules and keeping track of our work. She checks for missing work every week and makes sure that we're on track. Avid encourages the students to think deeply and reconsider ideas. Last week, we had a Socratic seminar in an article about aliens. Ms. Machado made sure that we understood the article by reading, highlighting, and note-taking. We learn to respect others' opinions but also reshape them by discussing our concerns and/or asking questions. I particularly appreciate the learning environment that Avid provides. This atmosphere where we can communicate our opinions and spawn new ideas is hard to come by even in school. I hope that we're going to have more Socratic seminars in the future.
Thank you. So, I'm Jessica Bias. I'm our school social worker at Creekside and I also coordinate behavioral services for the Wellness Center and counseling and all the new programs that are coming in. And so, deep breath, Wellness Team. We're good. They're getting nerves. So, as a social worker and support staff in the Wellness Center, we recognize that while wellness, mental health, social, and emotional learning have always proved an important component of student success, the need for these supports is even more present now, coming back to in-person learning and supporting our kiddos. And so, district site staff, you guys, of course, have supported us as we've rolled out this evidence-based model of a Wellness Center following after the high school Wellness Center and the success of the Wellness Center at the high school. So, we've done a great job so far. We've gotten started and rolled out services. And so, our new space is Room 25 and it's a full-size classroom equipped with two pocket offices that offer some privacy for confidentiality and also one-to-one counseling, and then a beautiful group room. And so, it's been a really great addition to the campus. And so, the center is accessible to all students and is available throughout the day. Limited times for drop-in, but aside from that, we're already offering individual and group counseling. At this point, we already have 40 students that have been assessed and enrolled and are already participating for the school year. And then, we have four groups running right now. We're focusing this fall's quarter on our sixth grade, incoming sixth graders as a fall focus. And so, some other services are, like I mentioned earlier, drop-in counseling, crisis response for myself and the other counseling team members, including safety and risk assessments for some of our higher needs. And then, we launched this year, different, was a lunch activity group that's been a sixth-grade fan favorite. So, it's been a really cool highlight of my day. And so, we invite students to come in. They get to choose a quieter space. They get to make it their own, play board games, interact with each other. So, I want to always highlight the great things that we're doing. We get 40 to 60 kiddos throughout the lunch period, so it's been great. But I want you to hear it from them and their favorites for the lunch activity that's new this year. So, I will hand it over to the heartbeat of the Wellness Center. I'm sure our little wellness warriors.
Hi, I am Kluj Gatal Seed and I'm a sixth grader at Creekside Middle School. I like the Wellness Center because it is designed aesthetically pleasing. I love the ivy falling and different artwork. And when Ms. Bias plays music, it feels calm and chill. And when we get to eat and talk with each other, I'm also glad that the Wellness Center is there because we get to meet new people and have snacks there.
Hi, I'm Lavina. Marley Kluj and I are all from Egypt and we love that we can speak Arabic with each other in the Wellness Center and we do not have to worry about what other people think of us. The Wellness Center is the best place on the school and I feel safe there.
Marley didn't get her first sentence in, so we're gonna sneak her in the back because she wanted to end with the proper appreciation.
Hi, I'm Marley Rascal and we are sixth graders at Creekside Middle School. I like the Wellness Center because it is designed aesthetically pleasing. I love the ivy falling and different artwork. And when Ms. Bias plays music, it feels calm and chill and we get to eat and talk with each other.
Hi, my name is Guhan Anankumar. I'm in eighth grade. The Wellness Center is a fun place to go because it has so many activities that will keep you entertained, like mini-basketball. By the way, I'm the champion. Udo Monopoly and much more. These activities can help you interact with people that you normally would not. It's such a lively and relaxing place that you can forget what other people think of you and your stresses and have fun.
Hi, I'm Dani Solis, a seventh grader. The Wellness Center is a safe place because everyone is together and there's always a trusted adult to talk to. I love the snacks too. The granola bars, popcorn, fruit snacks, and cereal always bring me back before fifth period. Eating lunch in the Wellness Center is what Guhan and I always do. It is a warm and comfy place with their bean bags and a couch. It is... Being in the Wellness Center is a great experience and we recommend it to other students around campus.
At Creekside Middle School, we are passionate about nurturing the academic and social emotional growth of our students because we believe supporting their development sets them on a journey towards a bright future. As you have heard from our remarkable student leaders, these programs make an impact on their lives, empowering them with skills and confidence they need for middle school and beyond. We couldn't be more proud of them. We look forward to continuing the work to ensure the success of every student at Creekside Middle School. Thank you for your time and attention.
We are gonna offer a few recognitions and awards and I want to say, if you are a family member, if you want to take a picture, please feel free to come at any angle so that you can get a picture of your student or your parents. Um, could Olive Wiggand come to the stand, please? The Governance Team, along with Creekside Middle School, are proud to honor Olive Wiggand. Olive stands out as an exceptional student for many reasons. Academically, she is an outstanding scholar with a rigorous work ethic. She is engaged and turns in all her work on time without skipping a beat, even when she is absent. Her commitment to excellence as a student is evident in her work with some assignments leaving lasting impressions on her teachers for years even after she has moved on from their class. Her sixth-grade English teacher in particular remembers her as a talented writer and poet who was able to skillfully convey complex emotions through a limerick writing assignment. Aside from her schoolwork, Olive is kind and helpful to her peers as imaginable. She is extremely respectful to teachers. She's a team player, gracious, giving, and patient beyond her years. Creekside staff could not give a more glowing commendation as Olive is most deserving of this recognition. Creekside Middle School is proud to acknowledge Olive Wiggand as our Student of the Year. The Governance Team, along with Creekside Middle School, joins... I'm so sorry. The Governance Team joins Creekside Middle School in honoring Olive Wiggand as an outstanding student. Olive, would you like to share with us tonight who in your family and friends joined you?
Um, my mom is here and my dad and my stepmom and my siblings and my grandparents and my best friend.
Hello, families and best friends.
Janet Everson, come on down. Um, I'll just take this. The Governance Team, along with Creekside Middle School, are proud to honor Janet Everson. Janet Everson has four children who have attended Creekside. And not only were all of the Everson Scholars excellent students, they also gave back to the community or active in student government and extracurricular activities. It's no doubt that they took a page from their mother's book. As a volunteer, Mrs. Everson's dedication and commitment to our school community has been remarkable. Namely, she was on the Athletic Boosters Board for six years, three of those years as president. She started the now-popular annual golf tournament fundraiser, created a successful playbook for Battle of the Valley, Castro Valley Super Bowl, and is largely responsible for bringing the Athletic Boosters to the successful place it is now. Mrs. Everson brings her professional expertise into her volunteering and sets a high standard of work and morale. Outside of the boosters, Janet is generous with her time and resources and contributes in countless ways throughout the year. Volunteer power is a huge asset to our community and Creekside is deeply thankful to have had the example and leadership of Mrs. Everson all these years. The Eversons leave a legacy at Creekside and will be missed. It's with great pleasure that Creekside Middle School recognizes Janet Everson as our Outstanding Volunteer of the Year. The Governance Team joins Creekside Middle School in honoring Janet Everson as an outstanding volunteer.
Congratulations. You have to say that. Say the stuff and you get to keep this too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well. I mean, the truth is, there are a lot of families at Creekside who are willing to give their time and it turns out that I'm just really good at delegating. So, that's why we were so successful. I have truly enjoyed my time being part of the Creekside family and thank you very much for this. Janet, I know you already left, but your family, is your family here and your kids? Do we have board comments?
Um, I just wanted to say I'm really glad to see that Creekside got a Wellness Center. When I was there three years ago, it wasn't in yet and I think it's really beneficial to the students, so I'm really glad to see that. Congratulations to Olive. Creekside is really fun and you should be really proud that the teachers and staff wanted to recognize you. And for Janet, last year during homecoming, I was in charge of getting all of the convertibles for our parade and I could not for the life of me find any. I needed five and I only had one. And the week of homecoming, I called Janet and I said, "I really need your help." And she got us all of them plus an extra one, so she also helps the high school too, so thank you so much and congratulations.
Um, I really enjoyed hearing from our students tonight about their experiences in the Wellness Center just as like a hangout place. It's so valuable at a school to have a place where you just feel comfortable to come as you are, hang out as you are, speak whatever language you want to speak and, you know, not have any judgment at all, you know? So, I'm so grateful to hear that that's the impact of this Wellness Center. I'm a Creekside parent also, so I've heard my own students', you know, experiences, which also have been so positive, you know? And so, good work over there and yay, I just, I love it. I love it. Just, there's nothing more valuable than knowing you have a place to go hang out at lunch and, you know, have a comfortable place to be. So, loved hearing about it. And congratulations, Olive. You sound like a great presence on campus. And also, just want to say, Janet, I mean, delegation is a skill in and of itself. Congratulations on mastering it. I'm still working on it myself, so thanks, everybody.
Well, thanks for a great report. Those two terrific programs that are really important over there at Creekside. All we've heard about Avid at all the schools is it's a fabulous program, really helps students. So, it's always great to hear more good news. Wellness Centers are just fabulously important for us now. They've just headed off so many problems in advance and then helped the students enormously, especially these days, so kudos for all of that. And thanks in particular to the students for sharing their perspective on those two programs. It gives us an additional insight into those, so thanks very much to them. And also, congratulations to Olive and Janet for all the great things you did over at Creekside. Thank you very much.
It's really great to see Creekside. I taught one class of math for one year at Creekside, so I have a little bit of a, well, it's a few years old now, but an inside scoop of it on Creekside. A wonderful place to be. Avid is a great program. It's great to hear that EL kids are being targeted to be in that program, you know, for college and career. This is fantastic. And then, the Wellness Center for social, emotional learning is really great. It's great to hear from the kids that all came up and spoke to us. And it was really nice to hear that somebody felt very comfortable about speaking their, you know, another language besides English. I wish people could speak another language besides English everywhere. You know, not just the Wellness Center, but it's a place to start and feel comfortable. And congratulations to Olive and to Janet. Thank you for all your good, hard work and volunteerism. Thank you.
Hello, Wildcats. It's great to have you all here tonight. I think I've described Creekside to many people as like the anti-middle school because it's so not what I thought middle school would be like based on my own experiences, my awkward experiences back in Norfolk, Virginia, back in the eighties. And I mean this from the bottom of my heart. I don't know if my family could have survived the last three years without Creekside. It really has been a wonderful, nurturing community that cares about the whole kid. And it's true, I just see the passion in everyone there. You know, when we hear about Avid, I always wish that I had had something like that to teach me how to take notes. So, kids, please, please learn to take notes now. It will help you as you get older. And it's really heartening with the Wellness Center. As we've come out of the pandemic, I think that we have to fight and ensure that we always have these type of spaces. And, you know, Dani, it was great to see you. I realized you went to preschool with Ollie, right? And it's really important that boys talk about their mental health and it's really great that we're just making it socially acceptable. So, like, I'm gonna tell all of you now, if this Board ever tries to shut down Wellness Centers or to get rid of social workers or therapists, I hope you protest. I hope you come to these meetings and you try to recall all of us and fire us because this is the type of investment we need because we need you to be able to be open and a whole kid. Olive, I'll just say, I'm a big fan of yours because of your name. My kid's name is Ollie. I'm wondering if your parents ever dressed you up as an Olive for Halloween because we did that. But I really hope as you move on to high school that you continue your leadership and you're there in being a part of that fantastic Trojan community. And speaking of a fantastic Trojan community, I'm looking over at the Eversons. What, just what a great family and what a great contributor to the Creekside community. I want to thank you for entrusting me of the care of your daughter this past summer. But, you know, I know in middle school it can be awkward for parents to step up and Creekside, I think, has proved counterfactual to that and how folks stand up. And so, Janet, please continue being, please continue delegating. We need more delegators in this world. And so, just thank you, everyone, for the Creekside community, from the bottom of my heart for being here tonight.
Yeah, I think what we heard tonight is that the students are at the center of everything. You saw students presenting. You see how all the supports that they have for students. I think it's obvious. We're very fortunate to have an amazing team, you know, staff classified and our admin team, Ms. Wolf, Ms. Shi.
You know, staff classified and our admin team, Ms. Wolf, Ms. Shee, Ms. Machado and Ms. Bias, who really lead Avid and Wellness Center. Their hearts in it all the way. And you, you can, you can see, I think what I, what you hear about Avid is building confidence and skills, like you build confidence once you have the skills. And, and that is what really carries you through. And as far as the Wellness Center, I think, you know, to your point, this board has made a commitment that social emotional support for students is key in their success. And they, even during the time where there were budget cuts, it was even, you know, a few years back, it was not, not, we're not cutting, we're adding. And I have to say, we're very fortunate to have a program district wide that we have even 10 interns for so, uh, social work interns, because they don't just go, you know, to any school district. And that's, that's just wonderful, uh, to, to be able to have. The other thing I wanted to say is, uh, Ms. Everson talked about delegation, but you know who to delegate to, right? And that's really, really important. So thank you so much for, for everything you do. And now that you said about the car, I know what you're talking about because there was 10. So thank you so much. I want to say, besides what you heard about Olive and when you know about Olive, I just love the fact that Olive is a wonderful big sister to her little brother. And it, it just gives me such, uh, I have such gratitude for kids who get to have to, are lucky to have little sisters and little brothers. And sometimes you, you know, you, life brings you things that are just beautiful and how you deal with it is so important. It says a lot about Olive. So, uh, it's, it's just great to have, to have you, uh, in the school district. And I just wanted to thank you for being a wonderful big sister.
I, I don't want to repeat what everyone says, so I do echo what they say, but there are a couple of things that really stuck with me. There was this on the PowerPoint, this wheel that says it's okay to feel this way. Can you imagine what our world would be like if everyone learned that at a younger age? That it's okay to have human emotions and feel things. We all face adversity, some of us more than others. And to have that compassion and care and understanding would just be such a beautiful thing. And so thank you to Creekside for creating that space. But thank you for the students for living it, for trying it out. You're going to make our world a much better place and thank you for being so vulnerable and kind with one another. I also want to say, you know, we have 56 languages spoken in our community. And our diversity from how we're feeling, our lived experiences and our lenses, our cultures, it enriches us. We are so lucky to have so many different people here in one community that we get to live and learn and grow together. And so thank you for creating that space for us to show that we can learn from each other, that we can have that enrichment. And I just really appreciate that Creekside staff, teachers and kids are really making that, that happen. So keep up the good work. Keep being kind to one another and learning and growing together. And before we move on to our next item, I do want to ask Principal Shee, would you mind coming up and introducing your staff so we can say hi to them? Thank you.
So we have Assistant Principal Pam Wolf. Annie Machado, our Avid Coordinator. She actually also teaches, um, our PE and Avid Excel. And she is our EL mentor and EL assessment coordinator. Wears many hats. And then Jessica Bias, our social worker, who is, uh, manning the Wellness Center.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it Creekside. We have a couple more items and then we'll take a short break. Board member Chilton.
In the district this month, for the elementary school, CVE is having their Monster Mash on Friday, October 27th. And Proctor's Walkathon and PTA Carnival is also on the 27th. Palomaros is continuing their Coffee with the Principal and has a book fair, um, the night through 12th. So that's this week. Chabot is holding a Digital Citizenship Spirit Week this week and their musical was announced to be Madagascar. Vanoy has their Fall Festival and Halloween Parade on the 27th. Play CV is putting on a Finding Nemo play at Vanoy and Marshall. And Marshall is also having their Halloween, Halloween Parade on October 31st. At the middle schools, Creekside is hosting, along with Play CV, a three-on-three lunchtime basketball tournament. And their Zombie Thon is also on October 27th. And Creekside and Canyon continue to update their sixth graders about outdoor school and their seventh and eighth graders about the Washington DC trip. At the high school, we're doing PSATs this week. That is happening tomorrow. We are also having a costume contest. That's going to be on the 31st. Our Pink Out Home Football Game is on October 18th against O'Dowd. Water Polo Senior Night is this Thursday. And the last week we had a very successful blood drive. So I think we had 115 student and staff volunteers for that. So that was very good. Choir had cabaret last Friday and outdoor school counselor applications are now being accepted.
I love fall in our district. There's so much going on. Thank you so much for your report. Superintendent Amadi.
Yeah, just, uh, always enjoy visiting school. The last, uh, few days, a, a couple of weeks, I've visited Stanton, CV, CVE, Palomaros, Jensen Ranch, Proctor and Independent and loved every minute of it. We had the Teacher of the Year event at the CFA with the entire county, Teachers of the Year and families and, um, and staff there on October 5th. CSBA Roadshow, uh, which is school board members around the county. Again, because we have the beautiful CFA, there is a lot that happens. Not only things for our school district, but the county, um, really uses, uh, the CFA. I, today, um, I actually visited. It reminded me of the vast number of people and the ages that we actually support from two years old to 72 years old. And we don't think about that when we think of a school district. So today I was at the preschool. It is an absolutely beautiful preschool. Teacher Lillian and Ms., uh, and, and Dr. Tumita have done a phenomenal job with the, with the staff there. The kids are busy. I almost felt like they can skip kindergarten. Just kidding. They are awesome. They just know what to do and, and it's just a beautiful space. And then from there, um, I went to the adult school, which we have, uh, English language, uh, English as a second language. So I got to see that, but also our strides program. The strides program actually serves our students with special needs from 23 to 70, whatever. And now we have 72 or 73 years old. It's, it's amazing. It's a place, um, where, uh, they're, they are learning to be independent. They are working together. They are, uh, they're, they actually job, have jobs outside. And they have an amazing garden. If anybody wants to have the most delicious broccoli, zucchini, it's all over. They, they actually take care of it and, and it's just beautiful to see. Then from there, right next door is the resource room where we support families that have needs, that they really need our support. And they were giving, uh, food, um, just the, the necessities, uh, to families. They have that connection. So our social workers were there. Telsia, our liaison was there and families, um, came, uh, to pick up what they needed. So when you think about just this little corner even, serving two-year-olds all the way to 70-some years old and families in our community, I just want to, it makes me really thankful and grateful to, to be, uh, where I am. Uh, and then today at lunch, we actually at Rotary had, uh, a speaker for, about, speaking about the arts. And it was really great for me to be able to have Jennifer Jervis, who's our teacher on assignment for art and music. And, uh, Patrick Hanson, our principal, who were there also to make connections because we have, the fact that we have expanded art and music is a big deal. And I think it's wonderful for kids. When you talk about cultivating the genius in kids, it's through reading, writing, art, music, physical education, everything that, that we expose them to. So that's my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Amadi. The clock looks like it's 6:40. And so what we're going to do is we're going to take a 10-minute break. You're welcome to go home, eat dinner, go to sleep if you have to, maybe some homework. We have a great board agenda afterwards. So you're welcome to stay. We're gonna review our consent agenda. We're gonna look at approving the personnel report and get a great presentation on our summer school program. So you're welcome to stay and welcome to go, but either way, we're glad you came. Thank you so much.
I move approve.
Do we have any of our union reps with us tonight? We do not. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda? We do not. We will move on to item ten, the consent agenda. This is an action item.
I move approve.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Board member children?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
Motion passes. Oh, I will vote yes as well. Six zero. Now we will move on to our reports, discussion and action items. We will move to item eleven A personnel report. Well, this is an action item.
I move that we approve the personnel report.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? One of you did. Whoever was first. It will be recorded in the minutes. Howard. He wins this time. Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes five zero. Now we get to hear a really cool report about what happened in summer school. We're so happy to have you all with us tonight.
Yes. Good evening, board members, cabinet members and stakeholders in our virtual audience. We are very excited. We have a team here tonight that is excited to talk about summer school, what happened in twenty twenty three. So we're gonna talk about our elementary program, our E S Y program and our secondary programs. I have a team here tonight, so I want to just introduce them because they're gonna be doing the real presentation. So for the elementary program, Principal Pat Hatchen Smith is going to be presenting. For our extended R E S Y program, we have Sam Brewer here. And then for our secondary programs, we have Mr. Steve. So we are really excited to have the team here tonight. I'm going to talk just a little bit about our overall program. We had smaller class sizes overall in our programs. We had lots of supports in addition to what was happening with the classroom teacher. Because we think those things really help to make sure that the program is seamless and really supportive to our students. We had at the elementary just two sites this year. We supported E L A and mathematics. And of course, in our high school program, we did the credit repair programs and optional online courses. So that's just kind of like an overall view of kind of like the big, big picture. And now we're gonna get into the specifics. And I'm gonna hand it to Mr. Pat Hatchen Smith. And then he'll hand it to Mr. Sam Brewer. And then he'll hand it to Mr. Hendy.
All right. So as Mr. Sichy said, we had two sites for our elementary summer school this year. Independent was one and then Stanton was the other. Gina, Kim and Vivian Paratore were co-principals at Stanton and I was at Independent. It was for three weeks, half days, so small but mighty, just like our kids. In the program, we focus on E L A, so reading and writing, math, and then an overall focus for our English language learners or multilingual learners. We tried to focus in on essential standards because we have limited time. So in reading, started at phonics for our little ones, all the way up to fluency and comprehension for our older kids. Writing, we started with basic letter formation for kindergartners and the third and fourth graders were focusing on being able to retell informational texts, content and mechanics. And then in math, we focused on basic counting for our little ones, all the way up to multiplication and division for the older students. So what did the data say? We gave students a pre-test before, like on the first couple of days of summer school and a post-test, so we could judge how well we did. And when you look at the data, these are some important things to notice. You're gonna see three bars. Blue is the number of students that we're meeting, or the percentage of students that were meeting expectations in the pre-test. Red was the post-test. That's wrong. And then the yellow is the amount of students that showed growth. And you're gonna see three sets of bar graphs. So one for reading, one for writing and one for math in each grade level. So in kindergarten, you see the blue, red and yellow there. The, we had eighty eight percent meeting standards at the pre-test for writing and ninety four percent for the post-test. But the most impressive thing that I want to point out in all of these graphs are the yellow, that ninety four percent, almost ninety five percent of students showed growth from the pre to post-test, which isn't necessarily able to be seen with that red and the blue. Even if they were already meeting standards, we still saw growth for them. And you can see similar trends in reading, writing and math for all of our grades. First grade was really impressive with the amount of growth that we saw with students. And then as you get into the older grades, you see a little bit less growth because the skills are more complex, but we're still seeing highs of like eighty six percent, eighty seven percent growth for our students. We also took some, some data, or some thoughts from teachers, staff and parents. Teachers were really happy with the connections that we created this year between the reading and the writing curriculum. It was much more tied together than in years past. They really enjoyed the smaller class sizes because it allowed them to give individual attention, a lot more focus to our learners who need that, that type of focus. And then they really, really enjoyed the partnership that we have with the high school service learners, them coming down to the elementary school level and supporting the teachers, supporting the students. Parents, we saw an overwhelming amount of them talk about how happy they were with their students' engagement in summer school and how impressed they were by the amount of growth that they saw in their students. With only three weeks of time, we made a big impact on those kids and hopefully caught them up for the next grade to be ready for the school year. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Sam Brewer to talk about E S Y.
You. Good evening, everyone. So our extended school year program, it coincided with the summer program, eighteen days. E S Y, as you're seeing, it's a term we use in special education, stands for extended school year and also half days. So we housed our programs for students at different grade levels at the following sites. Our pre-K programs were housed at Alma Preschool as well as one classroom at Independent. All elementary E S Y programs were at Independent Elementary. An appreciation to Mr. Hanson for helping a first-time E S Y principal navigate the Indy campus. Middle and high school programs, those were housed at C V H S and the Roy Johnson Adult Transition Program, as well as the Counseling and Rich Classroom where at Redwood High School. So extended school year, the purpose is, this is specifically for students with disabilities and of that population, specifically those who in their I E Ps have the E S Y service. And this is intended to safeguard against regression of skill in any number of areas, right? Because we do a lot of different things in special education over an extended break. Okay? So those are the kids that qualify. Pardon me. And so this, this is just a smattering of what we look at. We obviously look at academics and I'll get to related services like speech and language, but there are others as well too, as well as functional skills. Little bit of data for you. So the, the upper left, you're seeing students in our district during the previous school year who had E S Y in their I E Ps. So those are students who are entitled to the service, about fourteen percent of our students with I E Ps. It's a little over a thousand. And of that fourteen percent, we had really good turnout, a big jump in turnout from the previous few years. Not that we had bad turnout, it was hovering closer to fifty, sixty percent. We had about seventy percent take advantage of the service this year. Quickly, because you know, this isn't really extensive, but just giving you a window into some of the different curricular resources we use. Of course, you gotta understand, we're serving pre-K up through all the grade levels up to adult transition in this program. So we're gonna use different tools with those students. And then obviously, it depends on the student's program. We're serving students with really extensive support needs and everything in between. And then finally, it's not just teaching and learning in the traditional classroom. Our speech and language pathology services are going. We had three S L Ps. This year, we had two occupational therapists. We had a physical therapist serving our kiddos, targeted behavioral supports, transition support, and we even had some overlap into the R S P program in traditional summer school that Mia alluded to. We had our visual, visual impairment specialist and transcribers helping to make sure the materials in the general education summer school were accessible to our students who needed that support. And then finally, one of the deliverables at the end of E S Y is an I E P goal progress report for every student and all of their I E P goals. The goal here is to maintain progress on goals. Often, students are taught by a different teacher during E S Y. Sometimes their same teacher, but usually different school site, different teacher. It's not necessarily about pushing them and stretching them. It is summertime. It is a half day, but it's about maintaining progress and we don't lose ground with them. So just in conclusion, another successful E S Y year. I had the pleasure of being, serving as principal this year and so going to each site and seeing kiddos in the classroom, out of the classroom, building community as a group on each site was a pleasure and a privilege. Thank you. I'll pass it to Mr. Stephen Hendy.
Hi there. Myself and Ms. Blackman were principals of the secondary, middle school and high school summer school program at Castro Valley High School. And we had nearly five hundred students that we served. The vast majority were high school students looking for credit repair and about forty or so middle school students who were getting kind of a taste of what, what goes some enrichment towards the summer, but then also being on the high school campus as well is also significant for them. In terms of demographics, we had about forty percent Hispanics, Latino students, ten percent African American and the remainder other races. And by gender, we had about sixty percent or so male and forty or so percent female. And then we typically serve a lot of ninth, tenth and eleventh graders. Like the, the end of their ninth grade, the end of their tenth grade, the eleventh grade. And then we have a few twelfth graders who still have some credits that they need to earn in order to fulfill their graduation requirements. And then split out in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade there as well. And then our grading distribution, the vast majority of students are there to pass their classes and we were successful getting them through that in just a few short weeks there. Some of our students did not earn credit, but most of them earned credit. So we had about six hundred and fifty-six units of credit that we gave out and only a hundred and seventeen of the units that we thought we were gonna be able to give out, students were not able to earn that. Also part of the program outside the high school, we had this middle school program as well. And students were referred to the program by their counseling counselors at the Creekside and Canyon. They came and had the option of taking English and/or math, so we could either service them one period or two periods in a flexible kind of way that way. The math curriculum included edgenuity and other resources, a lot of creative thinking in terms of teaching, high engagement strategies used by teachers both in math and in English curriculum as well. English also included project-based learning and some daily language review as well. After that program was done, we had a short break for our summer and then both the middle school and the high school, as we were coming back on campus, we invited some, a select group of students to come, both at the middle school and the high school to get a feel for what this transition might be like. So a fifth grader going in the sixth grade was invited to the middle school, a eighth grader going into high school, they were also invited to come to the, to the high school. And we use this time to build connections with the students, especially with our adult staff. These groups of, small groups of students got tours, did icebreakers, got a chance to meet each other and just a chance for them to feel more comfortable on campus. So that happened just before school came back into session and we call that our step up program. Overall, for the programs that were discussed tonight, you know, just considerations moving forward, making sure there's budgetary support for recruitment and retention of summer school teachers, administrators and other staff. So we have to hire full staffs for these and making sure that if we want to offer so many sections of Integrated One, that we have enough Integrated One math teachers there. And sometimes we have our regular staffing that wants to roll into the summer programs and sometimes we have to extend out and making sure that we have enough support for the courses that we need to offer there. Also making sure that our teachers are coordinated in terms of common assessments for the summer program and that they're aligned with what we do during the school year to make sure that their courses are rigorous there. And then another challenge that came up is transportation for middle school students, especially in the middle of the day. So our release time was about twelve thirty, I think, and a lot of parents found it challenging. They found it easy to drop off, harder to pick up in the middle of the day. And it was kind of, you know, it's just a little bit of anecdotal evidence that, hey, we need to think about that. And I think that is it. And we're happy to entertain any questions.
Raymond? And then Kuziak?
So, Mr. Hendy, your comments are about transportation. Actually, I had already like written a question after care, transportation. And, you know, for those kids who are kind of stuck, I guess, do you have any, I guess, anecdotal evidence of just kind of like how, whether we're getting home or how they?
We, it's got home. That wasn't the problem. We didn't leave anyone behind. But I think what it was more is that a parent has to, wants to do the program, but it's a, it's a problem that they need to solve and maybe we can partner with them somehow in the future to make sure. And then also note that they're used to providing transportation from Canyon or Creekside and that makes sense. But then you go to the high school and that's a new location for students to get picked up from in the middle of the, in the middle of the day. I think that was more of a deal breaker for some families and we would want to think about that.
Did, did you, then, then did you find, or were you finding that, you know, for, like, we saw these pie charts of like kids who could attend E S Y but that didn't or it was the summer school, either way? Were you guys finding that that was one of the factors in whether or not families were signing their children up to participate?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be a consideration I would, we would want to address moving forward.
Um, and then I guess the only other thing I wanted to add was, um, or just share, my, my son, not this year, but last year participated in the step up program. And as a parent, I thought it was really useful. So I appreciated just kind of the parent portion of that program very well. So it's great to see that that program's expanding. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments about step up. I, I kind of wish every middle school family could experience that because honestly, it's a, it helps, it just helps with that big transition. I have a couple minute, a couple of questions. You know, I've been thinking about learning loss since, you know, we pandemic really made us think about that. And I just kind of imagined this big bubble of like, this is all the learning loss and it kind of keeps on going forward with our kids. And so I'm just, I'm thinking about, you know, when we talk about summer retention, right? And if we know that maybe the model isn't the best and it almost exacerbates that, why do we do it? Like, why do we continue having a schedule like this? Why do we, for our special education kids? Why not have a year-round program? And I know it costs money. I'm looking at the superintendent. Suzy, I know it costs money. So I'm just wondering, are there other like calendaring, calendaring models that could reduce learning loss or? And I appreciate that learning loss is not necessarily the same thing as learning what you need to learn in the first place and I have questions about that too.
So I'm not sure about schedule. I think that the program that we offer actually has great success in, in, in helping students to not not regress like Mr. Brewer was talking about. And then also to make sure that any student that needs to catch up, like say at the elementary level, like Mr. Pat Hanson Smith was talking about. That, that, that summer program, even three weeks worth of it, actually really helps kids to catch up um, and get to where we want them to be so that they're ready for the next grade level. Um, I think that also during the school year, our multi-tiered systems of support programs really work hard. Our teachers work very, very hard for our tier one, tier two and tier three instruction to really make sure that we're making up wherever, wherever students need. If they, you know, we get, we talk about equity and students get what they need when they need it. And I, I think our teaching staff and our principals work really hard to make sure that it's first good instruction happens. And if they don't get it then, then tier two instruction happens on those essential standards. And then if they don't get it then, then we got a third shot at it. And we're talking about specifically that at the elementary level right now where they're working with the R T I specialist to really like, okay, so what is it that they really need in order to get those basic fundamental skills so that they can write back in, into tier one instruction and get it then? So I think that we have lots of systems in place in order to help students get what they need so that they're really prepared for the next grade level. As far as different schedules, I think that's probably bigger than um, you know, the conversation around summer school. And I don't know if Ms. uh, Superintendent Amadi wants to talk.
I was gonna say, it, I mean, it's a model to have your own school, but it's a big change. Um, most school districts don't have it because a lot of our staff actually really enjoy having that time off. Uh, a lot of our families enjoy that time off. There are pros and cons. The pros are obviously like you're constantly with it. The con, especially in a community like ours, two parents usually work, both parents work. So imagine every few weeks, four weeks, two weeks off, what do they do with their kids, right? They can't always take vacation every so often. Um, although it is nice for those who can. So there are always pros and cons, and I, I think you already answered that. I was gonna say for transportation or special education students had transportation. Yeah, so that, that transportation is already a part of their I E P. Um, it's the regular ed um, students that we really, yeah. And, and you know, it is something that we really need to think about because we're talking about kids who we want to make sure they have the support and um, we'll have to see what ideas we have.
Just to clarify, the students in E S Y, those who need, who require
Who need, yeah.
Based on their unique circumstances, not all of them.
Yeah. So it, the same during the year, right? Those who have it in their I E P.
Trustee Howard, then Trustee Adams? And then I want to go and then you can go.
Let's have a quick historical comment. That is, we did have year-round school here at C V E. Maybe ten years ago or so, yeah, and we, and we ended it.
You had to.
Trustee Adams?
I, I just had a quick question. So uh, you're the uh, Sam Brewer, you're the principal for E S Y? Yeah, and you have a special ed background or?
Do, I work with the special services department here in.
Oh, he's our coordinator.
Question. Yes, thank you. And he was a principal before or an administrator before. Yeah.
All of that is true.
Worlds colliding.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just, you know, and I know I'm not going to ask a long, long question, but, and maybe I just want to know, what was your favorite thing? I mean, you were leading in a different environment over the summer where it's not a normal environment that all the kids are there. So is there like this one thing that you're really excited that you experienced?
Can I go first?
Yeah, please.
My favorite thing has always been being out at drop off and seeing the family dropping off their child, saying goodbye to parents. It's just that interchange. Never get tired of it.
Yeah.
I think for me, um, just the structure of the smaller classes and like mixing the kids up allowed kids who are normally quieter on the shire end to really blossom and take on some different leadership roles in the classroom. The scene them open up and, and speak a lot was nice.
And I think as we're doing credit uh, repair, uh, when you, and I work at the high school after, you know, when we come back after it's the the kid that made it like, and they got some breathing room in their life. They, they lost a bit of their summer. They still got most of it, but they lost a little bit of the summer. Uh, sometimes as a consequence, sometimes as, you know, poor planning or whatever. Uh, but then they come back in August and they just have that breathing room, their sophomore year or their junior year, and they get a reboot. They get a restart on, on it. Um, and I really appreciated that, um, not having done summer school before, still having worked with the kids, but yeah, you definitely, you know, there was a sacrifice that they had to make and then they got, they got their units and they're back at it. Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
I have two final questions. One, the first one's two parts. Sorry. Well.
Only asked two.
Um, I just, I, I'm just noting, I mean, as school board members, should we be concerned when you look at the demographic distribution in that chart? And related to that, um, I'm wondering what, do we learn anything in the summer school that informed how we make tweaks to the curriculum? And other services we might need to provide to our students? And then I have another question after that. I'm almost done with that.
So specifically to the elementary level, um, it, it kind of works both ways in terms of like looking at the year-long curriculum and seeing what our kids are doing and then tweaking the summer school curriculum to align to that. And then also going back then to the school year. This year we focused, we saw um, the data from the year previous summer school um, and the focuses that the kids were doing in reading and writing, and we adjusted um, to have a, a stronger focus on the specific principles of the science of reading that is needed at the grade levels that the kids are at. So like the the phonics instruction in the first and second grades, fluency in third and fourth grades really honing in on that, in on that to try to make sure um, we push them faster, close that gap quicker.
That's just the demographic piece is a really important one. I think if you looked a few years back, it has actually shifted. I would say there was a time where you would walk through classrooms in the summer and it was mostly students of color. And that has shifted, still room for growth. But it has shifted because of what happens, what they talked about during the year. I was going to say my observation as I wa, especially for elementary, I noticed, and I know I shared it with um, with the principal Hanson Schmidt, I said, I noticed there were a lot of students in elementary who just who are bubbly, moving around all the time. It was like a common characteristic of a lot of our elementary kids. So that tells me that, and they're smart. They just can't sit still for a long time, which is beautiful. But that kind of, that has to help us shift our thinking about what we need to do during the year. And that's why I'm really happy to see when I walk through classrooms in elementary, you don't see what we used to see many years back, right? Everyone is sitting straight this way, nobody's they, the kids are more free to move about to do what they need to do. Like there was a time where we wouldn't allow, like if a student wanted to stand up, it was not okay. Now they can stand up, they can walk around, they can talk.
Quick shout out to Natalie Weinberger, who's our general ed behavior specialist now, who we recently added because of noticeings like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, um, I want to just thank um, I mean, we always have presentations from elementary and secondary and, and quietly Mr. Luango sits there and, and Ms. Sklute, I just want you to know, there's so much work that goes behind the scene and, and how they support our schools, whether it be presentations for the school, you know, for schools doing their presentation or any of these things that happen. I just wanted to share my gratitude and to thank our summer school principals and everybody, because that meant they didn't really have much of a summer at all. So, and there was a time where we used to say, you've got to be there the whole time. I really love the attitude, the, not the cookie cutter, cutter approach. Everybody has to do, we're like, hey, we can have two principals. Actually, they can actually take some time off. So again, being flexible and about what we need versus what we think we should be doing um, is really important. So I just wanted to thank you.
Yeah, my last question. Um, it, it seems like so much in California and the United States is like a race to the bottom when it comes, just compare our country to others. How many days do our kids have structural time, right? Um, I think one eighty is on the low side when you look at other countries or just look at education funding. When we're coming back from the pandemic, I know like LA Unified uh, tried to get like one week of extra learning and it was optional. Uh, do we need more school days? I mean, I know it's not popular and I know my kids would hate me for saying like, you need two more weeks of school, but like, should we, is that something like policymakers should be engaging? Like, we need a longer school year or we don't? Like, I, I'd be curious to know what educators talk about if, if that's a consideration, particularly when you think of like post-pandemic impacts. And I'm done asking questions.
So I'll, I'll start and then any of us can like add to it. I do think that um, there have been a lot of restructuring models um, that have said, have asked that very question about like, so should we extend the school year? Um, would that help? Um, and quite frankly, the answer that comes up is it's really what you do with the time that you have and how impactful you are and, and purposeful and intentional and strategic about the time that you have. And so I think what, what's so rich about Castro Valley is we use our time from beginning to the end of the day really thoroughly. Um, teachers are working extremely hard to make sure that, again, students get what they need when they need it. Um, the other thing that I would say is we actually do have more time with our Play C V partner um, in our after-school programs. And so we are, what are, what we're working on is how do we make sure that what we do during the day is actually very tightly coupled with what happens after school in our enrichment and after-school homework help program and our partnership with Play C V. So I think there is much more time and I'm trying to think of how many additional days we get when we have that additional time with Play C V, but I'll get, I'll, I'll get those numbers, but it does, it does add additional time to the overall day for many of our students.
And I will just say, piggybacking on a Play C V as a music teacher in the district previously, and if you go outside, you can actually hear the band uh, rehearsing for their big competition this Saturday, they're opening their season up. Uh, I would be interested in things that are really sticky for students and uh, engagement, engagement, engagement and finding ways. So not just adding summer, you know, time for, for calendar times without going uh, how can we find the students who are not engaged and create programs for them to be more engaged? So that would be, that would be the thing that's, when you said that was at the forefront for me is the as a band will come out two or three weeks before the school starts, uh, the athletic programs will come out you know, months before school, they'll work the whole summer. And those are the kinds of things that we need to figure out um, for all of our students. Not just the ones that want to do athletics and music that makes school sticky for them.
Yeah, excellent points, excellent points. I was going to say, actually, if you look around the world, not all places that do better than us have more days than us. Like, for example, if you read the Finnish lesson, like in Finland, they actually have less days. What they do have, which many, in many cases people don't have is professional learning community every day, dedicated time where teachers actually work together. And two is professional development and support with the teacher, whether we call it teacher on assignment or any of those things where you actually have a coach and a mentor actually helping you to increase your engagement. So it really, I, I agree, it's about engagement and there are things that that we could, if we had more funding, um, or we were allowed to do that, but this professional learning community is working together as a group of teachers, every day they do that. It's amazing.
Briefly, yeah. Um, Mr. Handy, this idea of stickiness to me, I like my I just flew up. I, I remember when I was in high school, every year we all, all of us students were required for one week to pick a thing. And it was like a special one-week class, you know, and that's all you did for the week. Um, you know, morning to night, and my college did the same thing during January, you know, and, and this idea of like really saying, okay, we're going to offer a very short, very brief sort of unusual thing. You know, for me in high school, it was quilting, you know, I, I would show up and I would go for a week and I would just do quilting. I still sew to this day, you know, I'm, I make all my clothes, you know, and, and it was something that made me really excited to be present. Um, I, I just, I love, I, I feel like there's a rich like thing to explore here, which obviously we probably can't do right now, but I am, I, I just love this, this, this idea of how do we make it sticky? And it's really wonderful that there are programs where like the band has to show up a couple of weeks early and football has to come early or whatever, you know, I it would be great to see um, additional opportunities like that for our kids, like for our kids who aren't into music or aren't into sports, you know, because God knows they are out there. So anyway, thank you for using that word.
Thank you all for joining us so late in your evening after working all day helping our kids. We appreciate you. We appreciate you what you did over the summer and we look forward to seeing you again soon. We hope you have a great night and weekend. We'll now move on to board comments and reports. Trustee Raymond, what have you been up to?
Uh, I've been really busy. Maybe that's why I'm exhausted tonight and it's not the COVID. Um, just this week I participate, or in the past week, I participated in the C S B Roadshow, um, which was, it was great to meet and connect with board members from around the area. Um, hear about kind of more recent legislation that's gone into effect that impacts our schools and boards um, as well. Um, I attended the county teacher of the year ceremony last week as well, and I I really loved hearing like the videos that have been produced about each teacher, following them through their classrooms are all really like, oh, wow, you know, it's such a wealth of incredible teachers all around us and, and congratulations to Castro Valley's Claire Hapner for um, her award that night. Uh, I attended on Friday night, I was really, I, I, it wasn't really even on my radar, but um, Ms. Sadoway emailed me and invited me to attend the choir cabaret program and that was fantastic. Uh, so mark, you know, the dates for the December concerts on your calendars, because those kids are, they bring it. They're amazing. Um, and hats off to the parents, um, the music society, music parent society who uh, also um, organized like the meal that night and just the fun event that it was. Um, was the band thing on Saturday? Cause then I went to that too, and that was really fun and unusual and full of feathers and um, it was, it was nice to get a peek at what our band program is doing. Uh, then also last week, I think it was Wednesday morning, I, I volunteered to show up for Walk and Roll to School Day at Creekside. And that was really fun. Um, the kids had a ball. I really enjoyed uh, working with um, Mr. Rathburn and his leadership kids that morning. Um, we spent about forty-five minutes handing stickers and putting them on the board of, to, to see how kids got to school. And I will tell you, the, the message there is we could use some more buses. Um, also got a chance to speak with um, C H P, who was also present about um, what can we, what, what, how can they might help monitor uh, some of the intersections around our schools during pickup and drop off time. So it's a good, good, very busy week.
Thank you very much, Trustee Howard. What have you been up to?
I just have a couple of things. I was at the, with most of us at the uh, road show last week, which was quite good. And um, Friday night I was also at the cabaret and it was very good and uh, packed. Really packed. Uh, and the last thing I'll mention is, I mean, you mentioned that uh, today at Rotary was the art show, but last week at Rotary, we had um, Affy and the uh, Reading Tosa talk about how you learn how to read, which was pretty fascinating. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Howard. Trustee Adams, what have you been up to?
Sure. Um, so I went to the C S B Roadshow and uh, the, what I remember most about that was uh, all of the different leg. all of the different legislation that's about education coming up or has been passed and waiting for the governor's, um, uh, signature on those. So that was, uh, very good to see and to just have them all presented at once. Uh, teacher of the year event is always a wonderful event. It's at the C F A center. Beautiful place, of course. And then you get to watch these videos of all the different teachers in Alameda County and how well they're doing. And of course our own. Um, and then I did go to both Rotary last week and this week, there was the Art Inc. this week. And there was, uh, of course, um, the science of reading last week. Um, some things I knew about, but of course some more that I learned too. So those were good.
Thank you, trustee Adams. Vice President Kuziak, what have you been up to?
Uh, well, first, I, I won't be here at the next meeting. Uh, I have to get back east. I have a business trip and I, uh, need to get back to central Florida. I wasn't able to be there on the anniversary of my mom's passing. So my grandmother, 99, and I are, are going to spend some time together as a family. Um, I did have the opportunity to participate last week at C V E for their walking school bus. That was amazing. Uh, I think there was probably about 80 to 90 kids there with their families. Uh, we went from Owls and, and walked to the school. I was the caboose. Um, I don't even know if anyone knows what a caboose is anymore, but it was a lot of fun. It was just so much fun. Um, and trustee Raymond, Ollie says, thank you for the pencil that you gave him at Creekside. And I got a pencil and it's like changes color, everything. So I want to thank, uh, again, uh, the California Highway Patrol for the partnership. That was really cool. And then I am a, uh, I am a family member of the band, uh, went to that performance. Um, lots of feathers. Uh, it was really amazing and the resiliency of our brand, of our band kids is just remarkable. And I, I, I keep on just saying, I don't know what Mr. Rexel's doing, but he's taking it to like a different level. Um, that was some interpretive, amazing, like seeing my kid, if you, if you know him, he's almost as big as me and he plays the flute. Um, and just seeing him move on that field like that just was incredible. So, and they, to think that all the time they spent doing that. So the performance was fantastic. Please, I am happy about the arts that we support in our school. And then one last, uh, thing I just wanted to, to mention and um, my, pardon my pronunciation, but, um, Zan, Zendeki Azadi. Uh, women, life and freedom. And I, I just wanted to acknowledge Narjas Mohammedi, uh, the imprisoned Iranian activist who is this year's winner of the Nobel Peace Prize. I've been thinking about that a lot this week. Um, I'm thinking about it tonight. I'm thinking about, um, a school board down, uh, down the road. Uh, and what happens, uh, when we dehumanize others and the consequences of that. And so, um, Superintendent Amadi, I, I, I want to again, thank you for centering our district around about, around our humans, these little humans that come into our schools and knowing, and, and I wish we had a little bit more of that. Maybe you'd have more peace in this world. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Kuziak. For myself, I attended the C S B A Roadshow, but just for the beginning part, I had a work meeting afterwards. Um, and then I'm excited. I get to join y'all on October 16th for the R O P ambassadors program and everybody else, Gary's coming?
Trustee Howard is the R O P assigned to R O P and Board President Lavender are, uh, come to the ambassador. So usually Board President and whoever is the, uh, R O P person. So in December, when we switch over.
Yeah, I'm really excited. I also started doing an internal survey at work, uh, to share what jobs in the future might need to look.
Hmm.
I'm gonna be bringing that information with me as well. Yeah, we could make some connections there. I want to thank everyone for tonight. I know there's a lot going on in the world. Sending love and peace to everyone and I wish you all a good night.